Okay, afternoon. Welcome to the Wednesday meeting. I'll let you go right ahead.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioner Savannah Clement, Public Services. On our agenda today, we're going to start off with just some facilities updates. The Annex project, which was the ongoing kind of remediation and reconstruction projects from some water damage, excuse me. The drywall is complete. We also have the network cables installed as well, and so we're moving forward. Next steps carpet, which we already have going as well. So I think the last project update we got, we're looking out about, was it, I think it was a long projection, so fingers crossed it's shorter, but I think another six weeks or so. But it's moving forward at a quicker pace than expected, so we're pretty happy with that. On the same line, we have ordered the desks and panels for OPD so that they can move into their space as soon as it's done. So we're looking at about the same timeline for completion as receiving those, so it should be, fingers crossed, it should all work out schedule-wise to getting them in at the same time. So those are all positives, and that's the first floor. So moving into the second floor after this phase is complete, also waiting on designs from ETA for the second floor as well. Any questions on the Annex OPD space? Okay, move right along. And the next item I have on here is, third time's a charm. I kind of keep bringing this up, but I do have an update on the Hall of Justice feasibility timeline. So I was able to bring the timeline, which is extremely hard to read and small, very hard for me to read. So I did include it with the proposal, but it is ready for the chairman to sign. And the timeline, we're expecting a November final result. But for our, the DC trip in May, I'm hoping that we can have a kind of a broad summary and maybe some of the preliminary items complete. It looks like based off of the GANT schedule, we might have some information to bring. So I'm going to include the schedule with the proposal if the board is okay having the chair sign this proposal. So I guess I just need some head nods. I see. Okay, I'll take that as yes. So I'll bring that up as soon as we're done here. And then the Janus House update. So a couple of years ago, Public Services took over leases for the county. The Janus House, we call it, is actually two houses near the Hall of Justice that the county owns, and we currently have a leasing occupying that space. We were able to do a tour yesterday, and I'm going to go ahead and have Sean explain some of that.
Yeah, Sean, really, how it works. Like Savannah said, we did a tour of the two houses on Washington Street, 124 and 202. The county acquired those some number of years ago. We'd like to create a new lease on that. They have not paid a value in the past. They have done work on the property to improve the property. We're looking at possibly a five-year term or something along that length. We'd like to just get started on that process. That's something the board's open to, to continue their work on there, and then possibly expand some of that into the parking lot next door so they have somewhere to park. And of course, they'd be improving that themselves as well. Some of the, the work they do, I think Savannah can really touch on that.
Thank you. Nice. Yeah, so part of the visit too is to kind of ask a lot of questions about what their program is, what they provide the community, how this lease kind of came about in the first place, because it is very unique to have a nonprofit occupying county-owned space and paying limited lease fees and a short-term lease. It was only a year back when they signed this lease with the, I think it was the previous chief of staff organized it. And so the history they kind of gave was that these two houses were almost in a condemned shape. And we had actually, as a county, about a block over tore down some condemned houses that we had owned over there by the bail bonds house, that big white house, the two lots to the north of it are also county-owned. And we took those houses down. Actually, I think our road crew took those houses down. These two were kind of on the same chopping block, and Janus House volunteers stepped in and said, wait, we can fix these up, we can use these spaces, you know, let us, let us try. So that all happened. And what Janus House does is provide a day stop area for homeless youth in our community. So we learned a lot about that and asked a lot of questions and found out that they really are relying solely on grant funds, mostly, I think, state, federal, and then also, actually, their staffing is paid for by St. John's or Peace Health locally to fill the need of supporting this program. It's very interesting. So they're not an overnight shelter. We weren't quite sure how that operated. We were able to physically see the rooms, so their donation room, that they have free clothing, hygiene products. They actually let them do laundry there at that facility. They are able to shower there, kind of have a place to land during the day. That's what one of the facilities is used for, one of the houses. And then the other one, which is almost a mirror copy, is actually like their administrative space. That's where they hold and host their meetings, meet with case managers. They work a lot with our juvenile detention probation officers for community service and case management. So the house on the left is actually like an administrative office. Anything that I may have?
Yeah, and I just want to throw, add on to it. These are not large homes. They're only about 1,300 square feet, so they are quite small. Two bedrooms, one bath, and a small garage unit.
It's not an overnight facility?
It is not. No.
And are these, is this nonprofit on the list of nonprofits that we fund?
We asked that, because I was not aware of that, and they are not. They do not get funding, according to them verbally, from the county currently. I did ask that they come to a Wednesday meeting to share with the board what they do and how they provide their service in these two houses. So we can either have them come at one of our meetings or a 2:30 meeting, but I did extend that. I think, we told them that it would be great to have them come and at least explain what they're doing and how they're serving, you know, this population.
What, so how many people, any idea how many people they helped in the last year?
I asked that. I felt like I was grilling them, and I was trying not to, but I was like, these are questions that will get asked. And she said it's, unfortunately, she had a hard time giving me a number. I was like, any average, weekly, monthly, and she said it's really hit and miss because of the kids that come. So I would, I would imagine maybe a handful a day on, sometimes, she said holidays are always very busy there. So Thanksgiving and Christmas time, because they host, you know, their own event there. They get a lot more kids, and it really kind of just depends on the time of year and what's going on in these kids' lives. So I could not get that number, although we did ask.
But, but the county owns the houses?
Correct.
And what kind of an agreement do we have? They are paying us rent? Is that right?
No. I'll let Sean.
So the lease, they put a deposit on the homes of about $1,000. They do not pay us rent. Instead, they are doing the maintenance and improvement on the buildings themselves. These were very rough buildings when they took this over. Like Savannah said, the other homes in the area were demolished, and these probably would have been demolished as well if they didn't take these over.
So we have no cost in the maintenance of those buildings?
And we have no liability?
That's my understanding.
Okay, I guess, I want it better than your understanding.
I'm sure there's always liability being a county-owned property. Yes, but they do have insurance in place.
Yeah. And so at this point in time, you know, if the board was open to this, I'd start working with legal and revamping this agreement to a more current version, and then come back to the board when we're ready to have further discussions on that. And hopefully, Janus House has been here to discuss with you their mission, their goals, and then we can make a decision at that point.
Because, yeah, like Sean said, it was a one-year contract with two renewables, I believe, behind it, but even those expired a few years back. So when we no longer had Chief of Staff, and the leases kind of fell to nowhere, we got the files. Now we're going through those and seeing was that a date and what we need to, and this is one of them. And this is one of them. That's why we toured it as a group to see where we're at. So it was an eye-opener for the three of us when we toured this week to see what the conditions of the place, what work they did, what work continues to need to be done, but what would a future lease would look like for them if the commissioners and Janus House wants to continue that lease.
Yeah, I would say that my only, if legal's going to look over the contract, my only concern would be, is, you know, if we're giving them the lease in lieu of the maintenance, what's the market rate that we would charge for that? And are we even close to it? Are we gifting, you know, are we gifting things at that point? I would want to make sure that we're not in that situation.
And those were clearly spelled out in the last lease, and I expect to see that again.
Well, if the original agreements are long past expired, I guess I want to know that we don't have any liability and any responsibility if somebody gets hurt or killed on that property.
I agree. We'll look into that. Last risk.
Yeah, last risk, risk pool.
Who runs it?
So from my understanding...
I heard the name St. John, but they just help.
They just supplement wages, correct. So it's four staff people, I believe they're full-time. The person that we met with, her name's Tina. She's, from my understanding, the director. They have an office support person and two coordinators, outreach coordinators, making four total. They have two outreach vehicles as well that are on the property that they use to, I guess, engage with homeless youth in our area.
So they don't work for another entity, they just formed what they call Janus House?
Correct. And there is one other Janus House in Clark County. They're not really affiliated, like, you know, like Habitat for Humanity has like an international, like, almost like a franchise, but they don't. They are just independently operated, and they have their own board.
Across the board where they're affiliated with the church or something, they're just...
Yeah, not to mind.
Vigils that wanted to do this.
Yeah, I'm guessing that...
That's how I like to see it work right there.
Yeah.
Again, only meeting once and walking through with them. They're obviously very passionate about what they do and the community they serve. A couple of some facts they gave us, was there like the only, she threw out a lot of acronyms that I'm not familiar with that we kind of asked her to spell out, but essentially, they're the only agency in our area or county that has a certain, holds a certain license to work with, like, at-risk commercially exploited children. And so a lot of the, like, so DSHS and a lot of other agencies will refer or work with them because they're the only ones licensed. So, you know, they do hold kind of a niche, for lack of a better word, in our area for serving certain populations of children.
Probably asking you a whole lot of questions you don't know. Do you know if they work with the schools? I mean, are they? Because the schools have a group of kids that are homeless that go to school.
Yeah, no. Great question. I don't have an answer, but I could find out. She did talk a lot about, you know, kind of the misconceptions in our community about the youth they serve. And she said a lot of people assume that they're addicted to drugs, you know, and have substance abuse. And she kind of, I would say, demystified that and said, "No, that's actually not the case. You'd be surprised." You know, a lot of them actually have vehicles, or they're working, or they're living in their vehicles. They just don't, like, have a family structure that they can go to.
Yeah, they said most of the kids, actually, she almost said all the kids don't go home at night. There's not a place to go to. We thought maybe it's after school to go there for a couple hours and go home. It's though they either couch surf, go to somebody's house relative, or most of them do sleep in their own automobiles.
This gives them a place to shower and do other normal... Well, I think we should support it how we can.
Yeah. It would be great if they could come to a meeting.
Agreed. And I did extend that, so we'll reach out to her now that we've met with the board and try to secure a date for them to come and kind of talk about their program. Maybe have a lot more answers than I have.
And we did kind of coach her along the way of maybe what to bring to the board.
Yeah.
Knowing that these questions would be asked, that we don't have answers to, but they would. But we'll make sure if, no, we're going to do this, make sure it's like a liability and a legal side's all in place.
Yeah.
Anytime county's involved, they'll see you for whatever, but yeah, I agree with... I'd very much like to see it spelled out, you know, who they are, what they do, who they help, and where the line gets drawn for who they do and who they don't.
Correct.
And then specifically, the legal agreement between us and them to make sure that we don't have any liability and that we're not gifting funds, but somewhere that needs to be spelled out.
We can send you a copy of the...
As I say, we have a...
...agreement, just so you can see what they were, the agreement was and what their return was supposed to be on the maintenance side of the facility, just to see.
I'll give you my copy today.
Personal opinion, I think this is the way it's supposed to be done.
I agree.
Anyway, yeah, thanks for bringing it up.
Okay, let me just go right...
I have one more. I have a quick facilities item. Just if you saw the core, there was a cord van in the west parking lot last couple of days. We're adding some additional lighting to the exterior of this facility, mainly from the rooftops. So we've noticed that at certain times of day, it's been kind of dark, especially on the south side of this facility. So we're trying to lighten this place up a little bit more, so in case you were wondering why the van was here, so.
So we'd be a shiny beacon on the hill?
Kind of. It worked at the museum, so. Parks, just a quick update on the smelt run. Today was the first day, I believe it's today and Saturday, and also they're going to try to have dips next Wednesday and Saturday. I don't know if there's a lot of smelt in the river right now, but it's supposed to be from Allen Street Bridge up to the boat ramp in Castle Rock, the launch behind the high school.
So don't take West Side Highway.
I haven't seen any indications that they're running strong. I haven't seen seagulls or eagles.
Yeah, that's the first sign, seagulls filling the air.
Correct. And I just drove right through Castle Rock this morning. Last year when they did it, I had to drive up to Vader.
Yeah, kind of crazy through there. So they said they will not extend it past next week. So if there's a run later, a late run this year, next week's the only other option for dipping. So they tell us mainly because they want to make sure all their restrooms are open, at Riverside, Camelot, and Cook's Ferry, because mainly at Riverside, that's where their home base is for their officers. And they usually have about 10 to 12 officers here patrolling the riverbanks to make sure people have licenses. So we'll make sure we have staff there on Saturday and make sure everything's open and cleaned.
And that's why they're not going to extend it?
Well, they just told us they're, "We're going to extend it because they're only going to try two weeks," and that was it. They didn't give any other reason, and they don't expect us to open it up in end of March. So usually, it's a February run. If it's not here by now, I don't know if we're going to have a run.
This is way late.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. And do you want to go on the...
Proposal. So you guys have some, another ETA proposal in front of you. And this isn't relating to the, we've coined the Legacy Park Project. I had brought this to the board probably eight months or so ago to talk about our plans at Riverside Park. We would like to construct what we call the Legacy Park there, which is, consists of a pump track, sole bicycle track essentially, and then also updating playground equipment to make it more ADA accessible. And then really, that's it. The majority of it is going to go for a pump track design and a new playground set. Right now, we're trying to secure funding. And I met with our lobbyist a couple different times, which is David Hodges, who's been really great at helping us get these projects kind of earmarked and funded from outside of the county, if we can. Parks projects are really hard to get funded. They're just, a lot of areas have parks, and a lot of people are trying to get the money for them, and it doesn't really, we don't have a lot to make us stand out, unfortunately. We tried to go after funds for, you know, certain census districts, so low-income school population. It's really the only park in the area of this size, and we kind of missed the mark on that. So David's recommendation, and then also Kathleen from USDA was like, "You guys need to get project boards in front of people, and, you know, that's going to help you guys get funding." And so that's where we're, that's what we're putting in front of you today. This is really to help us get some conceptual designs out there, aside from our screenshot pictures that we have, which I can send you. They're really our in-house kind of ideas. So this attempts to try to get a really good design project going for these two items. So that's what this is. The original quote was higher. They reduced some fees and got it to about a little over $13,000. That's where we're at. I'm not asking for approval today. I'd like you guys to be able to read this. I'm going to send you some of the presentations that we've done and the material to give you guys an idea and some context behind this. And I'll come back next Wednesday and kind of talk it out again and see what your thoughts are. If we can get it done by May, I'd love to have it to request funding.
This is really the premier park in our system.
It is.
And Lexington isn't shrinking by any means, so I think it serves a big need over there. What, by definition, what changes ADA equipment? By definition, I wouldn't think very many people are going to be all that active that are ADA-qualified to be using very much intensive work or workout-type stuff.
Yeah, I mean, it's just that we don't have any parks in our system that have any kind of ADA accessibility. Most parks in our surrounding area do, to an extent. The entire structure is not going to be ADA. It would probably just be some portions. And, you know, what's a good penny park up north is a really good example, too. They've just redone that and implemented some ADA accessibility features, which I don't think people even notice. I think it's just part of the park.
Would this be an additional equipment or replacing anything?
It would be actually a new park play structure in the park. So we still have our other equipment. Right now, we only have one play structure there, and it's getting outdated as well. But I think the intent is to, because we've been replacing things on it, keep that, and we're installing another structure so that people have two spots to play. And Commissioner Doll, were you going to reference the city of Kelso?
Yeah, the one they just completed down there would give you an idea of the type of equipment. I think it's not as, there is some difference in the equipment, but I think it's the way they can access the equipment.
Correct.
More of the surfaces where a lot of the ADA comes in. But if you drive by the park down there, you'll see kind of what, that one's all ADA compliant. So that would be kind of what it is.
And a little, just some fun facts, is the county commissioners actually approved that for Kelso and provided ARPA funds to fund that park in Kelso for the city. So yeah, I'll bring more information, send you guys some slides, and talk about it next week.
Okay. Have we, do we have any parks that have the old-school stainless steel slides that melt your back as you slide down it?
I don't, unfortunately, no, but man, I've got some memories.
I mean, that, yeah.
Yeah, Tammo was a death trap. Yeah.
Jungle gyms, the monkey bars. I mean, you don't have any of that anymore.
Scald your skin.
Yeah.
Seattle does. They have a whole park that's all like a stainless. It's also a death trap, yeah.
Might be a consideration for those of us in our generation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nostalgic.
Bunch of older people out there with ambulances standing by.
The fire district's right by the Riverside, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and pass it on to Susan for Public Works. Did you want to come up? Sean for Crab Stuff?
You have some of it, right? Yes.
She's open.
So good afternoon, Susan Eugenius. Sean kept our copy. Thank you. So let's see, the first item I have is Crab documents. So as everybody else is, we are submitting annual reports. The first form that we submit is the Road Levy and Estimated Revenue Certification. And this information is all provided by the other offices. And we fill out the form, and it shows that we're not diverting. It shows what we're putting in traffic enforcement, which is nothing. It gets submitted certified by me, and once I sign it with Crab's new magical documentation, it gets sent automatically to Commissioner Doll as the chairman. Did you have it?
I already saw it today, and I was wondering, it must be coming in, but...
So did you want, I brought a copy of what you're certifying.
Thank you.
I mean, I haven't gotten it electronically and done it until the board gets a chance to hear it, but...
So this is all part of their change, of their new efficient paperless system that we used to physically bring this to the board for signature, where I would sign it, we'd do what signature. This is the first year they've done it on this manner. So it shows our, the total county valuation, what the road district valuation is, what our highest possible levy is, and what the levy we adopted in October, November was, and what our bank capacity is. So these numbers are all provided to Public Works that we input into this form.
Crab just accumulates this data?
Yes. We need to submit this in order to continue our eligibility for RAP and RADA funds.
Maybe they already know, but give a quick explanation of the RAP funds?
So RAP is the Rural Arterial Preservation Funds, which comes out of the RADA account, the Rural Arterial, oh, I forgot what the T is, Transportation Authority. So this is the funds that the state gives to Crab that gets distributed directly to the counties. We apply for projects on our arterials and collectors. So the big project that we're using RAP fund on this year is the Dyke Road, and there's also RAP funding in Cloverdale. We receive somewhere in between $1 and $2 million per biennium of these funds. It does not have some of the same ties that wash dot money has. We basically reported, and as long as we're using standard engineering practice and wash dots, they don't. It doesn't have the Buy America, Build America. It doesn't have the DBE requirements. If your project's under that $2 million threshold, it doesn't have the training requirements. Basically, we just report to Crab what we do. They don't review the plans and have their fingers in what we're doing beyond. Yes, this meets the project criteria.
And you said we typically get between $1 and $2 million a year from this?
Biennium. So every two years. Some years we spend more because it gets banked. And it's based on county population and road mile is how they distribute the dollars. So the higher population and the higher road miles gets more money. And that's lane mile, not centerline mile, which are two different numbers because some, especially if you're in Thurston County or Clark County, you have a lot of roads that are two ways in each direction. So it's done by lane mile, not centerline. Because that's twice as many as a single lane road or two-way traffic.
As far as agencies go, Crab, I think, is pretty decent. They do pretty well. Whenever I think of a Washington State government agency, I get all nuts. It's probably going to be a lot of nonsense, but Crab really isn't. It's really run by people that aren't government-type so much.
They're government types, like I'm government types. So the executive director, she is not an engineer, but the deputy director, he's a former county engineer. Their compliance director is a former county engineer, and the one who runs all the RAP programs, he is also a former county engineer. And that is fairly typical for Crab, that most of their staff is former county engineers.
Yeah, and they, from what I've seen, they try to be pretty equitable and fair in how they distribute out money. It's not, I don't see a whole lot of political nonsense involved with it. So that's just my take on what I've learned of Crab.
So y'all are good with Commissioner Doll using that electronic pen and signing away?
Works for me.
So the next item, we've already, if we're done, any more questions? Okay, so the next item, we've... Okay, so the next item, we've talked to you before about the Ecology Stormwater Electronic Signature in February, I can't remember what meeting. It's one of Ecology's rules that when there's a new board, they have to say that yes, the director of Public Works is the responsible official to sign everything. So on next week's agenda, you will see the formal letter that we copied from the last letter that was signed. Plus, we have an electronic signature form that you left on your desk.
I did, yes. I did fill it out and sign it, so when she's going over the 25 summer projects, I'll run back real quick so Chairman Doll can sign it behind me.
And then we'll just slip it, we'll just leave it with Kelly so it can be added to the documents for next week's agenda. So it's an electronic signature form that both of you have to sign so that Mike can officially sign. This is a discussion that we've had with Ecology in the past of why we have to do this because we name Public Works Director. Their, their opinion is that when the board changes, they need to acknowledge the delegation. They're the only state agency we work with that makes us do this, so. That is what that is. So the next item, we can talk as much as you want or as little as you want. If you are not in the mood to hear about my summer construction program, we will put it off for another day. If you want a short version, I could give you a short version or I could give you a long detailed version. What's your feeling today?
Your short version will probably turn into a long detailed version, I'm sure.
Probably. Go in the middle. So we've talked a lot about how ambitious our construction schedule is this year. And so I kind of wanted to give you an update on where we are and if I, how close I think I'm hitting my goal. Yes, I'm not going to hit my goal because something weird always happens because that's the nature of county projects. So this is my updated, excuse me, summary of where we are and where I think we're going to end up with call for bid dates. So I have the project names. I should have spelled some of these out better. Who the project engineer is, so obviously I've been using this internally too, and what our call for bid dates is and our construction estimate with some notes off on the side. So the first two projects are awarded, executed, and we are underway. So the Tower Juanita, that's the pump stations up in Tootle. Sorry, that's the one I meant. I should have added more information. So they are actually out working. If you live up off of Spirit Lake Highway, you'll see them out installing waterline on Spirit Lake Highway in the vicinity of Tower Road. They will put the pump station in late summer. So their plan is to finish up all the waterline work. And then when the pump station comes in, finish the project. So the unit price guardrail, and that's our guardrail repair project that's been awarded. They've been working for a week and a half now. They start at South County east of I-5 and they're working their way north. And they're going to swing back around west side of I-5, north to south. We anticipate this round to be done in three or four weeks and that we will have to do another round in the fall because we already have additional locations that are coming up. And he, he, the contractor, has indicated that they have other jobs that they have committed to. So we'll leave what is currently occurring to run a new list for the fall. And we'll schedule another time period with him in the fall to do another run. We're currently estimating that at $460,000 for our repair project. The Tootle wastewater treatment plant, that has been bid, awarded, and you will see it next week for execution. That's a $1.45 million project, ARPA money, total upgrades. So those top three, we're on it. They're going to be done. I'll be excited. I'll get three projects definitely off my list. So guardrail and delineators, those are WashDOT projects. And we have been working with WashDOT since November, back and forth to get the final approval. I had hoped those were going out in January. They are still going back and forth and the project engineer is about to go on vacation. So they'll sit for another couple of weeks. So you will not see those until April. Our annual overlay, I included it in this project because it's a, even though it's a maintenance project, it's a project that the engineering division handles because it's a contractor. So we're a $2.1 million project. Our roads have been selected. We've reviewed the specifications. I've indicated they're at 95%. What we're waiting on is we're doing some work on Klammer River Road that potentially, and Todd Road, that impacts the highway. And so you have to get a permit from WashDOT. So that permit has been submitted and as soon as we have that permit, we'll be ready to go out for bid. Next, I have down striping. We are currently about 80% on those specifications. And we usually like to delay that one at least a month behind overlay and not do it too early because we need to have all of our chip seal. But you don't want to do it too late because then you don't get on the schedule. That one's a balancing act to get out in good weather, but not too early. I'm actually kind of doing the long version. Garlock Culvert, we opened bids for the materials only last week. So the award for the materials is next week. And we anticipate two weeks out for going out to bid. Allender Bridge, that's up on, up in the Ridgewood area. That is STP bridge money. That's another one that we've been going back and forth with WashDOT to get the final approval. We put that one behind South Cloverdale just because we want to get South Cloverdale out on the streets as early as possible. Italian Creek Culvert, this is a FEMA project. That is call for bids next week. It's a small project, so it's one of those weird quirks. It's under a million dollar construction. We've already received the money. It's sitting in our coffers. We just need to spend it.
Is that the culvert at the bottom of Italian Creek Road?
No, this is a culvert up past Greenwood. So where Greenwood comes in to Italian Creek, you turn right, keep going up the hill, and it's up a little ways from Greenwood. It was damaged, the whole end section was damaged. It got plugged. The road was a little damaged during 2022. Event that we're working on getting finalized. So we have all the permits. We're ready to go. Tower Road Bridge, working on property acquisition and our final permits. Hoping to get that out July at the latest.
How much do we have to, how much property do we need there? I guess I'm thinking of the house, remember the outside after where they had some issues and stuff.
So we need a little bit on the front where their driveway is. And then we need temporary easements up the creek a little ways and a little further up their driveway because some of the design on that bridge, it's actually raising the road grade, which is a good thing for them because their driveway is very steep. So by raising the road, we're going to raise their driveway and flatten it out a little. It's still going to be steep, but it's not going to be as bad. So we do need some property from them, and that's what we're working on. We had our shorelines hearing. Can't remember if it was this week or last week. Everything's blurring together. What comments that came out of that is we need to add more large woody material to the creek. So we're going to be adding those into our plans also. So we're getting close on all the permits and I believe the appraisals are end a review so they can go to the acquisition agent to acquire the, what we need because we need property from those people and people on the downstream side who own on both side of the creek. I can't remember if we need any on the opposite side of the creek from the people whose driveway was impacted. We might need some temporary for them to, so we can get down and work into the creek because it's actually easier coming off that side.
So it sounds like some of the work we do will be some benefit to this couple?
Yes, there will be a little benefit.
I just remember back, that was pretty distressing for them when that all came out.
Yes.
And I, I think conservation area has been able to work the bank for them.
Yes, conservation has rocked that bank. And so that bank is rocked. We'll put in some large woody debris to create habitat down in the creek itself. So, and I think we are disturbing a little bit of that rocking, but we'll put it back, so.
When we acquire land like that, how is that done? Do they just concede a certain square footage to us because of the project? How do we get that?
So, okay, right of way. So when we have a project and we require right of way, we generally require, acquire strips on the front of people property. And we'll acquire permanent, which will have structures that we'll maintain in perpetuity with the road. And then temporary, those are usually tying in a driveway or to get access down under a bridge. So we hire, so Public Works has two right of way agents on staff. One right of way agent is about two months away from being a certified WashDOT appraiser. And the other has, is our acquisition agent. When you're doing a project, you go out, you appraise the property and come up with comparables for the reasonable value in the area for what the ground is worth. We do tree cruises, which we do outside of the county to value any trees that are in this area that we're going to be acquiring. And fences or any other structure that's within that area, we get a value for them to move or replace. So once the appraisal is done, if it's a WashDOT project, you are then required to do a review appraisal. So an independent appraiser looks at what the first appraisal comes up with and goes, yes, 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 or yes, oh, that one's not quite right, and you make some adjustments. So what they come up with is a cost per square foot. So if it's a dollar a square foot and you're acquiring 1,000 square feet on a 10 by 100-foot strip, let's say, we would then offer them $1,000 for the property and whatever, so if they had a fence in that area, whatever the value of the fence is and whatever the value of the tree is. So then the person who's the acquisition agent goes out with that offer and it's a letter saying, we've done this appraisal, here's a copy of the appraisal. The county is offering you $1,500 to purchase the rights for the property and to compensate you for your fence, your shed, whatever it happens to be. If we need temporary rights, depending on if it's federal money or not, we go. And in addition to the permanent take, we also need a strip that's 30 feet by 20 feet to tie your driveway back in. So that one we're working, the contractor will be on your property. We'd like those rights for the duration of the project. And you offer them, depending on the project, federal projects require you to offer them money. We are offering you instead of a dollar, 10 cents or 20 cents for renting your property. And so they go out with that offer. They are given a letter that by state law, you do have the right as a citizen to say, I don't agree with your appraiser. And the county says you are able to have that opinion. We will offer you $750 to pay for an independent appraisal. And they can bring back an appraisal that either agrees, contests. One of the recent property acquisitions I brought forward, they did have an independent appraisal done. Their appraisal came in, I don't remember what the dollar amount was, above what ours were. We didn't agree with one of the comparables, but we compromised in the middle between their appraisal and our appraisal. And that's what the acquisition agent does. So by state and federal law, the engineers that design the project cannot be involved in the appraisals and the acquisitions because we're considered to have vested interest. So that's why we use the independent appraisers and either our acquisition agent or an independent acquisition agent. We have on call contracts with appraisal, independent appraisers and independent acquisition agents. We generally use them on the more complicated projects. So if we're doing a little, I think Italian Creek, we did our own appraisals and acquisitions. So our appraisal, appraiser goes out, does the comparables, creates the report. Our surveyor draws up the area. We come up with a value. Our acquisition agent contacts them, goes out and negotiates, and then we bring them in for your approval for signature. So that's the right of way process and how it works. And they keep very detailed diaries of, I talked to John Smith on this day. We, telling them that this project is coming and here's general information on the project. We met with him on this day with the engineer because he had questions about the plans. We presented him his offer. We received back acknowledgement or questions. Hey, when you did this, you missed Grandma's rose bush or the apple tree my grandfather planted. And all those things are negotiated and come in to the end. When they're federal projects, those diaries are scrutinized by the WashDOT to make sure that we're following all of the balance items. And we have had to in the past go back and change things because they changed the rules and we have missed a few things and have to go back and resettle things. Now, if we meet somebody who doesn't want to, says, I'm not selling you this, I don't care how much money, that's when I would come to you and say, hey, we have a difficult person. We'd like to start the eminent domain proceedings to get whatever area we need. We need to have all that documentation from the right of way agent. That's when Doug gets involved and there's certain filings. And once you guys give us the permission, the first thing that happens is a letter goes out saying that this is your notice that a week from today, 10 days from today, we're going to stop negotiating and start the eminent domain proceedings. Some people, that works and they make up the mind and settle. Others, you have to go all the way through the court process, which we try to avoid at all cost because it costs us more money, not just what we end up paying for attorney's time, even if we come out on the amount we said, it costs us project time.
Thank you for the very thorough answer. For future reference, was that the short version or the detailed version?
That's my detailed version. The right of way agent might give you an even more detailed version.
Okay.
I just, I'm hoping it works well with these folks. It actually, I was in the audience when they came in. It was before my time. And I didn't disagree with the county stance on it, but I did feel bad for the stuff they had to go through with that, that property and what damage it did to it. And I believe we did, and this, once again, it was before my time, didn't we imminent, eminent domain some for the overpass down here by the golf course?
Yes.
Yeah.
There was one property.
That wasn't pleasant either, so.
But fortunately for us, because it's a Kelso project, they handled all of it. They did that whole process.
On the current acquisitions that you're referring to, are we in good negotiations with the landowners?
Currently, yes. Yeah. I, I don't think I'm going to have to come in and ask you guys to go to eminent domain. We did have one landowner on South Cloverdale that we got close to going that route, so. Unfortunately, it does happen. Hmm? That's the goal. I lost track of where we were.
Tower Road.
Oh, Tower Road. So we talked about Tower Road. The next one, I should have changed the name. I missed that. I left it on there. The next project internally, we call the Allender Happy Tree Slide. So this is out on Allender Road. There's, the creek is eating into the road. And the reason it's called the Happy Tree Slide is there is a tree right adjacent to this area where someone's carved a face into the tree. So, and the office is referred to as the Happy Tree Slide. And that one, we were hoping to go out this year. We're not sure if we're going to get our permits to make the fish window. But sorry for leaving the unofficial name on the list. Then we have the Ridgewood Emergency Water, which is also a property acquisition. Uh, Camelot Loss, where we're finalizing the permits permitting. And Shadow Mountain, which, once we get the other water steers out to bid, we will determine the scale of it. Um, based on how much money we have available between the ARPA funds and our congressional funds. But we will be doing some version of that and starting a call for bids this fall. A Pleasant Hill Bridge, that's out on Pleasant Hill. We lost that uh large culvert out there. We have a temp bridge in there. It is also a FEMA project. Um, FEMA has a little. Every agency is slightly different that you work through, so we're working with FEMA. We just received a bunch of comments back from FEMA. Our goal is to advertise that in the fall. The way uh the new bridge that's going to go in is designed. We will be able to work in the winter because we're not going to be working in the water. Um, we will, uh, the plan is to shut that road down for the duration of the project because it's an easy detour. We'll pull the temporary bridge out of there. They'll drill behind where the uh foundations are for that bridge. Put the bearings, the foundation, the head walls, wing walls, all constructed outside of the water. Um, put the beams down, do the decking. And then the whatever mitigation we have to do, we can do next summer during the fish window. So we will be able to get most of that constructed over this upcoming winter. Just the goal.
So with bridges, I'm assuming not everything is the same as a culvert as far as fifth passages goes. But there's, we still have to deal with that when we're doing bridges.
If you have to work in the water, so for the, the Ostrander Triple Box Culvert is now a bridge. Um, to pull everything is in there and to put the foundation, the way the the fat wing walls and the head walls are on that project. The work is was in the creek, so you still have to do the fish isolation isolation um and do it during, excuse me, that fish window. So yes, we do have to deal with it. It all depends on how your bridge is falling. It ta- the work takes a lot longer than the fish window. If your feet, if your foundation is wet, then you have to do that during the fish window. If it's just the channel, let's say have us reconstruct a uh interior low flow channel. Um, if that's the only work that you have to do, you can time the rest of the work whenever you see fit. And that works for the contractor to get under the bridge or in the culvert. So Dyke Road, that is that section that has um crab money in it. Uh, we're working, we've been working with the US Army Corps of Engineers for a year, getting our four oh eight permit. It has been a, our plans are ready to go, but they wanted how every utility is relocating their equipment. As part of this process and uh we are working on getting the last one turned in so that we can get that approval. We're hoping to get that approval and advertise uh in June. So the next two, West Side Highway Slide and Butte Hill Slide, they're both relatively small projects. Plans are pretty close to going, but we don't want to advertise them too early. Because you don't want to work on a landslide until August or September. Because that's when your um material is your driest. So the, that's why those projects, we've been focusing on everything else, will advertise those late season. A lot of contractors use those as fillers at their, their end of season work. They look at them and go, okay. And September, my crews will be knocking down. August, I'll be knocking off some work, so they like to pick those up. And next is the biggest project on the list, the South Cloverdale Road Project. So there's a little bit of a saga as to why that hasn't advertised. So our goal was advertise December. We are working on the specs. One of WashDOT's quirks is you have to use whatever the current specification is. They also say i- if you're advertising in the fall of twenty four, that most of the work will be done in twenty five. If you advertise before X date, you can use the twenty four specs. So we were aiming for that date and that date moved on us by two weeks. So we missed that date and we converted our specs from the twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five version. We sent those into WashDOT in mid-December. And we got comments back mid-January. We've been going back and forth comments. The last thing that we're hashing out is fish handling. So WashDOT specs, WashDOT has a staff of biologists. And the way their specification reads, the contractor needs to coordinate that work with the contracting agency. Who will defish the stream for them. Well, we don't have a staff of biologists, and so we always have the contractors do it. Because it takes out that coordination where they're coordinating with us, who's coordinating with a third party. So we think we've got the specs to the point that they're happy. So I'm hoping to advertise that the last week of March, but it might be the first week of April. So we have two culverts on that project that are fish passage culverts. So the rest, the rest of the specifications have been agreed upon. Um, so one of the new things that we're starting this year, um, as part of our compliance with ADA requirements. We're starting an annual ADA project. Um, we have survey complete and we're looking at doing it in August, um, maybe September. So we're looking at doing an intersection in Lexington near the school. So based on our ADA transition plan, uh, that was one of our areas of focus. So we decided we'd start at the school and radiate out from there. Up upgrading all of our ramps or installing ramps where we don't have them around the school, main school walking path. So we've picked the, an intersection, gotten the, obtained the survey. We're going to make sure we can get the ramps to work and meet ADA requirements, which sometimes is more complicated than you think. And uh, remove the old ramps that no longer meet requirements and put in some new ones. And then the last one on the list is the South Toodle Head Wall Repair. So our, um, one of our culverts in South Toodle Road has a head wall that is starting, that is being eroded behind. This is a culvert on our list to replace. Um, but we are slightly concerned that that head wall will go before we get to the project. It's not funded yet. We're searching for funding for the culvert replacement, but we don't think the head wall will last. We had our uh geotech consultant give us multiple options. A long-term fix, a short-term fix, two different short-term fixes with different costs. And so we've picked the lowest cost that will keep us out of the water. So it minimizes or minimizes and almost eliminates the permitting that will be required to be completed. So we hope to get this out in July so that we can shore it up. And last the five to 10 years before this culvert will be replaced. We've applied for Bryan Abbott Fish Barrier Removal Board funding to replace the culvert. Since, since it is considered a fish passage barrier. But it is a culvert that has issues, so and it, but it's on one of their priority streams. So we looked at it as an opportunity for us to replace something that's failing. But it will take, so it's on the list for design in this upcoming biennium, which starts July one. It is somewhere in the middle of the list. Um, so there's a hundred and two projects. I believe this one is in the thirties. So it's one of those, the funding line has varied at anywhere from twenty four to forty in the past few years. So it's one that might be funded. We do have a project on the list. That I don't know if you guys heard when we were, uh, when you guys were running for office. That the number one list on their project list is a Calitz County Lit project. So I'm pretty confident if they're funding anything on that list, we will get funding for at least one project.
Is this, does this cul- culvert give you any uh heartburn like the, the one where we're doing the bridge over? Is it of that magnitude?
So it is currently a duh, a, a single box. So it's a tall, narrow, single box. I don't remember how wide it is off the top of my head because I didn't look at it before I left the office.
If it fails, do, we don't think it'll be as catastrophic as the one up by the house, or we don't know?
Um, I don't think this one will fail in the same way. Um, this one is a concrete. This one is a concrete box, uh, box. Concrete boxes are generally put in in the, excuse me, uh, thirties to fifties. And they are built like bunkers. So unless they've had some kind of spalling or they're being eaten around, we tend to think that they're going to stand for a while. What happened at the Tower Road, um, ones that failed. So in nineteen eighty, when the mountain erupted, the mud flow went up this creek, so up Rock Creek. So in eighty two or eighty three, so the existing box culvert that was there was buried. So I believe shortly thereafter, in the early eighties, they came back in and they put two corrugated metal pipes on the top of the mud flow, rebuilt the road on top of it. So the failure of these culverts, so these were culverts that were put in the eighties, excuse me, so they are forty plus years old. The material is all mud flow material. Some, for some reason, those culverts were clogged. And the pressure from the water became such that that mud flow material washed out. So from the bank where it came around the corner where the mud flow started, all the way down under the road and out to the Toodle. Uh, it washed out and it dropped. The stream bed is now about two to six inches below the top of the old box culvert. We now can see that old box culvert that was buried in the eighties. So this creek just found its old stream bed in a cataclysmic action. And it's, so it's making the creek level back closer to where the Toodle has dropped since after the eruption.
So, but this one doesn't have those issues though.
No.
Which is good.
Yeah, we're good. This is not one of those culverts that was built on that material. And that, what happened to our culvert is very similar to what, why you can't get all the way to the visitor's center on Spirit Lake Highway. That was also.
Same type of thing.
That's, it's that same type of material. There was enough flow. It ate around. But theirs happened to be a bigger structure, but it ate around the foundation and that's why they had the failure. And that's why what they put in temporarily also failed. So that's the rundown of twenty twenty five construction. Fingers crossed, uh, I can do it.
Don't need another culvert. We're running out of temporary bridges.
Well, that's why we have to get them pulled so we have them laying around to use.
Move that one from the other one or just take it down the road.
Yeah.
Are they reusable?
Yes. Um, so the one that is at Pleasant Hill, we was purchased in, after the nineteen ninety six fu- uh flood. With FEMA flooding, FEMA flooding, FEMA funding. Um, and before it went in at Pleasant Hill, it was stored at the Castle Rock Shop. And it has been used temporarily in other locations. We used it during a construction project. We offered, I believe it was the um Growler Gulch Project. Um, they were, they used our temporary bridge um in s- instead of their own. So we've used it on construction projects. We have a temporary bridge permanently installed on the Ostrander Bypass. So one of the bridges out on Ostrander Bypass, which is what we open up when Ostrander floods, is a county-owned temporary bridge. Then this one that's installed on um Tower Road is a hundred and twenty feet. I believe that's the correct number, a hundred and twenty foot, feet long. And it's called, they used to be called Bailey Bridges, and that's not what they're called anymore. Um, and they're like tinker toys. So if we have another place where we need a bridge, but it's only eighty feet, we can install eighty feet of it. And forty feet of it can be installed somewhere else. So that's the beauty of these bridges. They come in sections so you can size it to meet your location.
How much do they break down? They're easy to haul from one location to another?
Well, they do require a crane and the low boy uh to load it on and then unload it onto storage. And we have enough area in the Castle Rock Shop to store.
Okay. I got another question that occurred to me while we were talking about this on guardrails. Do we ever recover from like an insurance company who, who damaged the guardrail?
So if there is an accident report and the driver has, and we have their information, we do bill them. Uh, the price is based on whatever the most recent, um, excuse me, contract is. So let's say you broke off an end section and the first ten feet of, of guardrail will go to what this bid price is. That, it's this type of uh end section and ten feet and come up with the cost and we do send bills out.
Okay.
I don't, with, that is one of the things we, when we come to you with our write-offs that often get written off and that we don't see. But there are a lot of garden, what, fifty percent, I guess, of our guardrail damage, we never get accident reports on because people just keep driving.
It, it is our largest write-off, isn't it?
Yes.
Guardrail. And you put a shiny new one up and those fenders just get attracted.
PUD used to think the same thing about their power poles. It seemed like a, a car runs off the road, it can never go in between the poles. It's always got to get one of them. But the nice thing about that is when the power goes out, you get there right away, even before the tow truck gets the car away from there. People are calling going, I got no lights. Okay. Thank you.
You guys are welcome.
Uh, since I have Mike here, real quick, we had a, a meeting with ecology. Uh, did a, did a meeting, Sean was in that too. Coordinated renewing the governor's office and the PUD. And we were appreciative that they, they did that. My takeaway from that meeting, it's more than just a, a money issue. There's things the PUDs uh. They, they need to, they want to work with ecology on some of their requirements because they're not sure how they can meet them. They're not confident that they can meet some of those standards and, 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 and not incur big extra costs and stuff. Is that?
Correct. And even, even if they meet, the regulations are, are being compliant now. What were the new hoops to jump through even three or four years down the road where they need new equipment or?
Yeah.
Um, update what they have.
It wasn't just the cost of installing these purifiers or whatever you want to call these things. It was a, a level beyond that. So I think until, I got to the sense there, until PUD and ecology can work out their stuff, it just kind of sit there. And there's not a whole lot we can do until they kind of figure out where they're going to go.
Exactly right. We had a chance, uh, Sean, I mean, we met with PUD about three weeks ago, just to get the, see what the interest was for both sides. To continue this project at the landfill. And there was interest, uh, maybe one last push through Olympia, then this meeting got called with the governor's office. But it's really, the ball's probably in the court of ecology to see if they're going to make any changes at all on their side. If they don't, I think it's probably a project that doesn't go forward. And, and not just forward with PUD. If, if, PUD with all the work they've done and how many hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions, pumped towards this project and they can't get it off the ground, I don't see a third party coming in to assist us at with the gas energy project.
Yeah.
So, or waste energy project. I'm, I'm sorry.
We really appreciated Bobak pushing that and, and getting us a meeting with the governor's office. But just so to keep you guys updated, it looks like it's just going to sit there until PUD and ecology can get some kind of agreement.
But they are working on it?
They, the, the sense that I got from PUD is after this session, they wanted to sit down with ecology and kind of hammer out what their issues are and see if they can find a way through.
Yep, that's what I got too.
Yeah.
So it's not off the table completely?
It's not off the table. They're going to work on it, but I don't think there's anything the county can push to make it, make it happen.
And our agreement with PUD, I think, has ended. And so if we decide to move forward, we bring in another contract in front of you three to continue this process with PUD.
Funds, federal funds committed to it. They had some different things that those timelines have all expired now, so it.
Yeah, one of their commissioners told me last summer, when it, when it first got thrown up in the air because of ecology. He, he told me that basically. up in the air because of ecology, he told me that basically way the funding was set up and what the agreement was with us, that project was dead. If, if it moved forward at any point in time, we'd have to start from scratch with a whole new agreement. So, yeah.
Yeah, millions of dollars were lost in that timeline.
Kind of what we heard too, I think that's correct. Anyway, I just wanted, while I had you guys here, wanted to make sure we updated because we did have that meeting. Okay.
So I got a question. While I was gone, did you put a tarp over the skylight?
No, because the last couple of weeks we had snow and wind, so actually I saw the maintenance crew this morning, we should get it up this week.
All right.
And we, but we still have not received a price back from our roofing company. We asked to get a quote just so I can, you can compare apple to apples to see what, we know what the price is to replace the skylights there, but we need a price to actually just to re-roof that section. So hopefully we'll have those by, for next Wednesday.
Okay.
So we can have it, how dark it is, and also give you two numbers to pick from. And we asked our arborist also for the north lot to give us some tree options. We're getting signs made to warn our employees and our citizens, our plan of attack in that north lot, so they're not surprised when they start seeing trees come out, that we will be replacing trees and what our, what our plans are for the summer. So we should get those signs in the ground, I'm guessing, the next week, and then probably start that process in April or May. Okay.
Just to bring something up, I got a, I got contacted by the Port of Kalamah with regards to a request that they have, that they asked us to vacate a portion of Totaf Road.
Yeah.
A while ago. He just contacted me today. I told them that we would, I'd bring it up in this meeting and see if there was, I think he said that they requested it in 2021.
I think that's what it said, 2021, do you recall?
It was, yeah, a few years back. I remember, I recall, I believe the commissioners at the time gave the Public Works and the County Engineer a green light to move forward. I believe it goes through a public hearing process.
That's kind of what I remembered too, and, and it was before my time, but I know we talked about it after that, and I thought we were okay with doing that.
So yes, I have that and several others on my list. The Port of Kalamah indicated to me that it was not a priority, but something that they wanted to get done eventually. I, we've started the process.
Okay.
Put it there. I guess my question to you, did they indicate we need this now, or?
Well, what he, what he, when I talked to Eric on the phone, what he said to me was that he felt that the ball was dropped and he had no communication back from the county with regards to it. And so I told him to email me so that I could email it to you guys, and then we would bring it up and, and figure out what we wanted to do.
Move forward. I think it's still moving forward.
Yeah. It, I guess it's just a.
We just get with them and let them know that we haven't, we haven't lost that request and we're still okay with that request.
And that was Eric that I talked to.
I know who.
Okay. Anything else, gentlemen? I'm good. Appreciate your time. You need me to sign those things? Okay, okay. We are adjourned, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Jessica.
Oh.
Let me sign these things and we'll do, do that, okay? Right here? That's it? Okay. Qualifications of an applicant? Five minutes, okay, we'll do that.[1434.53]